On behalf of the Petaluma Branch of the American Association of University Women, I'd like to welcome you to a forum for Petaluma City Council candidates. Our branch has hosted such forum as this one each election cycle for over 65 years. But this is our first Zoom one, so hang in with us. Thank you so much for joining us in this experiment. I'm Pam Granger and I'll be the moderator for this evening. We'll be taking about 90 minutes, give or take, depending on how technology cooperates. Tonight, you will only get sort of a brief look at these eight fine candidates. Sort of a taste of what they're about, a way to put a face with a name. We're on a tight time schedule, which is sort of a benefit of Zoom in that there's going to be no interruptions for applause. And unlike Chris Wallace at the presidential debate, we do have a mute button. The forum is being recorded, so let's get started. As most of you know, Petaluma government is comprised of six council members and a mayor, two, half of whom are elected every two years. And this year, Petaluma will elect three council members. Before introducing the candidates, I'd like to outline the format for this evening's program. Earlier today, the order for which the candidates will speak was determined. The last one to start will be the first one to close. The order is Kathy Miller, Lizzie Wallach, Brian Barnacle, Mike Healy, Robert Conklin, Gabe Kearney, Dennis Posake, and Susan Kirks. The candidates will start by making a brief 30-second opening statement, followed by a question and answer period. Each candidate will have an opportunity to speak to the question for a minute. I know what you're thinking, a minute for something this important isn't much. Go back to the idea of a look and a see and get a flavor to decide who you'd like to follow up with later. The questions were determined by those submitted from members of our branch. Following the question and answer period, each candidate will give a 30-second wrap-up and then will bid you adieu. We have some very important people who are helping us this evening. We have some assistance, technical assistance from Joshua and Christopher, my colleague Stephanie Capps with AEW, and probably our anchor for this evening is Patrick Carter. And we appreciated him volunteering his time this evening. So with that being said, you can't see them, but the candidates are getting a little assistance in their timekeeping from Patrick. They're going to be notified when they have 15 seconds remaining and then when it's time to wrap up their sentence and then be quiet. So now, with that being said, we're going to have our brief 30-second openings. And we're going to start, as I mentioned, with Kathy Miller. Kathy?
Thanks, Pam. Thanks for hosting. Thanks, everybody who's attending tonight virtually. My name is Kathy Miller. I've been on the Petaluma City Council for the last eight years. I am hoping to get another four years on the council. I live on the east side of town. I've lived there for 20 years. I've raised my children there. I love this town and I look forward and hope to continue serving you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Kathy. Now we're going to hear from Lizzie. Lizzie Wallach, please.
Thank you so much for having me here tonight. It's an honor. Our county continues to burn and our hearts continue to ache. We stand in a moment of great environmental crisis and social upheaval. I truly believe we can turn that upheaval into meaningful change. We need significant changes to transportation, housing, and economic vibrancy. With me, I bring a decade in working in architecture and as a mother of two young children moving through the Petaluma City school system.
Thank you so much, Lizzie Wallach. And we're moving on down to Brian Barnacle. Brian?
Good evening, all. It's a pleasure to be here. Petaluma is a wonderful place and I'm honored to call it home. Today, we've got some significant challenges and we shouldn't think that the same approach is going to result in different outcomes. I grew up here on a farm and today I work up every morning to fight climate change. My roots are in our ag community. And between my ag roots and my expertise, I can be a bridge between our history and our future. And that's exactly why I'm running. I want to keep us true to our roots and not be stuck in the past. I look forward to sharing my ideas. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Brian Barnacle. And we're moving on down to Mike Healy. Mike?
Thank you. So in my years on the city council, I've done deep policy dives on many important issues to our community. I've served as liaison on most of our commissions and committees, sometimes repeatedly. I was six years our representative to Sonoma County Transportation Authority, including when the original Measure M was passed. I was liaison to the Water Advisory Committee, to the Sonoma County Water Agency, including two years as chair. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mike. That was Mike Healy. And now Robert Conklin.
I don't believe he's with us tonight.
Oh, I lost Robert. Thank you for pointing that out. You might want to double-check and see if he has the right link. Just in case, Robert, there was an email sent out from Zoom Administration. And Zoom Administration, that was yesterday before noon. So double-check and see if by chance you've got that one.
I found him in the audience. He's being promoted to a panelist now.
Oh, excellent. Thank you. And see, this is just what I mean, an opportunity to be flexible. When Robert gets on, I'll give him an opportunity. We'll finish answering these, because we're in the opening remarks, so we'll slide him in at the back once we get him on. Perfect. Thank you. So let's go ahead on to Gabe for right now. Gabe Kearney?
Thank you, Pam, and the AEW for allowing us to have this forum this evening. My name is Gabe Kearney. I've been serving on the city council since 2011. Prior to joining the city council, I served on the Community Development Commission for the county, the Mental Health Board for the county, and my favorite, the Petaluma Tree Advisory Committee. When I'm not serving the community as a city council member, I serve as an emergency services coordinator, helping our police and fire staff throughout the state respond to disasters. I look forward to this evening and being able to share with you my view of how we should move forward as a community and why I feel like I am one of the best candidates. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Gabe. Just to help you fill out, Robert, and a couple more people, we'll have you go ahead and do your opening. Thank you. So following Gabe, we've got Dennis Posake.
Thanks, King. The incumbents have served together on the council for two terms, yet we're still struggling with the same problems. We must be able to turn our attention to the climate crisis, the personal and economic fallout of the pandemic, a good faith reckoning with fairness, equity, and justice, and affordable housing. For too long, the incumbents have represented the interests of developers rather than your interests. Tonight, you'll hear why it's time for a change. Thanks.
Thank you so much. That was Dennis Posake. Susan Kirks, Susan, you're on.
Thank you, Pam. Good evening, everyone. My priorities, as your voice on the city council, will be to lead in low-carbon green growth planning and development, provide affordable housing, plan and implement multimodal transportation and transit, be sensitive to and mindful of inclusion and diversity in all of our decisions, and all of this in the context of stringent environmental protection standards and new policies to achieve open space and green spaces. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Robert, are you with us now? Great. We're going to ask you to go ahead and make your 30-second opening remarks.
To tackle technical difficulties. Hi, my name is Robert Conklin. I'm a fourth-generation Petaluma resident. I live on the east side. I'm a truck driver by trade. I kind of do a bunch of other stuff, but I'm here to be your voice for working people. I just come from a working-class family and I want our opinions and what's best for us being in the room, listening, and sharing our ideas. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Robert. Appreciate that. Thanks for sliding in and making this work. So we're going to start with our first questions of the evening, and we will be starting not quite yet, but with Kathy Miller. We're going to circle back there. So everybody be thinking about this. There's just no small topic that comes up as priorities every year, so we might as well dive right in with the general fund. So the question is, the general fund forecast for fiscal year 21, '22 regrettably shows a negative balance of over $5 million with an expectation of continued decline. And this is only being, it's like adding fuel to the fire when you add COVID-19. So the question is, what specific areas of the city's budget need special review? That'd be Kathy Miller.
Well, we have been reviewing our budget continuously for the last year. So I feel like we've done what we can in terms of reviewing our budget and making the cuts that we are able to cut and still sustain service that the community expects. One of the reasons that I, as a council member, supported putting Measure U on the ballot was because we can't, there's nothing more that we can cut, and we're facing, as you mentioned, a huge fiscal shortfall. So I encourage people to vote for Measure U. I encourage you to do your research and look at our city's fiscal and organizational sustainability study that we did. You know, we are in desperate need of additional funds. We looked at multiple types of ways to secure funding, and the only one that helped us meet our goals was a sales tax measure. And so that's what we elected to do, and I support that wholeheartedly. That was something that was done unanimously by the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy Miller. And next, we'll hear from Lizzie Wallach.
Thank you so much. I would say first and foremost, when we're looking at the city budget, we need to really be having the conversation about transparency and trust within our budget and our council and the folks in our city. And that comes with electing new folks to the council. First and foremost, trust is something that's earned and worked hard to maintain. So with that, I will say that I support Measure U. Because in order to take a deep dive into where funds are going to go, we need to have funds to work with. So it is a terrible time for a sales tax, and I like to continuously remind folks what that means, that it's a one-cent sales tax. So with every $100 that are spent over the course of a month on goods not including groceries, rent, or prescriptions, that is one extra dollar paid out. It is not a perfect pairing, but if we're talking about equity and money and taxes and budget, I also support Prop 15, and I would ask you to do that as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That was Lizzie Wallach. And Brian Barnacle, what specific areas of the city budget need special review?
I believe you're muted, Brian.
Apologies. The consent calendar, all the purchases that we make, it's not going to cut our way to $5 million, but there's definitely some fat in our budget. I've identified a number of occasions where the city has either been about to make purchases that were not wise or did. I think another area where we could definitely look, and I love the idea of transparency, is really splitting out our fossil fuel spend. We went through the whole fiscal and organizational sustainability process, and I attended every single meeting. And I did not, I was never able to see how much we actually spend on fossil fuels, and I found that alarming because we adopted a climate emergency. So for me, I would look to cut in those areas. I know we need revenue, and we certainly, I'm supporting Measure U, regrettably, but it's, you know, this is what happens when we've gone to this place.
Thank you so much. That was Brian Barnacle. Now, Mike Healy.
Thank you. So with our fiscal sustainability workshops this year, I think transparency has been at the forefront. So we've been trying to educate the public pretty much on our fiscal challenges. I too support Measure U. It's the one path forward that will allow us to not only get through the forthcoming deficits, upcoming deficits, but also to increase service levels. I wanted to make a couple points. One is that six of the nine cities in Sonoma County already have local sales taxes, so we would not be the first by a long shot. And secondly, I have pledged not to use any general fund dollars or Measure U dollars in particular for crosstown connectors. I think we have higher priorities that need to be addressed with Measure U dollars. And so anyway, that's my 60 seconds on that topic. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was Mike Healy. Robert Conklin, please.
Well, we're in some tough times right now, and we're going to have to make some tough decisions. I support Measure U. Seems like the only possible solution to stop the hemorrhaging of, or the lack of money. I also support Prop 15. And we also need to start looking into saying no to Prop 22 with exploiting our workers. Sorry, I had to throw that in there. But if we don't pass Prop U, and I say this, tell your friends, we need this because we're going to have to start cutting services and strip down to bare bones, which I don't think is sustainable for very long. We're going to have to start laying off employees and, you know, never be able to fill those positions once they're gone. So vote for Measure U. It's not ideal, but it's kind of what we got to do in these situations.
Thank you, Robert. Now, that was Robert Conklin. Now, Gabe Kearney.
Thank you, Pam. So the question was about which part of the budget we needed to take a deeper dive into looking at. And I think the previous candidates have explained that the revenue side of the house is where we are lacking funds, and we need to generate more revenue. And so that's why I support Measure U and think that it's the best thing for our community going forward right now. Does not mean I'm opposed to other methods of bringing in more revenue and looking at what businesses we don't currently have here that we could bring into town that could generate more revenue. During the fiscal sustainability workshops, we've tried to look at how to make our city lean and how to make better decisions to make sure we're using, utilizing the people's money in the most fiscally prudent manner. And I think we presented a budget this year that has done so, and I hope to continue to have your support for the next four years and continue to do that work. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That was Gabe Kearney. Now Dennis Posake.
Thanks, Pam. Petaluma, like many cities, has significant general fund revenue shortfalls at this time. I also support Measure U, the sales tax. But if the measure fails, the new council is going to be scrambling from day one to find additional revenue sources. And even if it passes, I think additional revenue is going to be necessary. Addressing climate disruption, affordable housing, and the economic effects of the pandemic all have costs. We should be looking, in addition, at some non-regressive revenue sources. For example, increasing the hotel tax from 10% to 12% could raise as much as $750,000 per year. A marijuana dispensary could raise as much as $400,000. Petaluma should also be aggressive in seeking competitive funds from state and federal governments by hiring a grant writer or two. Finally, we need to pass state Prop 15, which would remove the Prop 13 limits on taxing commercial and industrial properties, and this would also provide reliable new revenue source for cities and schools.
Thank you so much. That was Dennis Posake. And we'd like to hear from Susan Kirks. Susan?
Thank you, Pam. Well, there are some unknowns, and one of those is at the national level. If the Democrats are able to gain the Senate and the presidency and keep the House, we may see some local and state assistance coming from pandemic-related legislation. And that will be something that we need to think about and look for. And in terms of Prop 15, I agree with the other candidates. If that passes, that will be also a revenue source for, potentially, for the city. So in terms of looking at the budget, I also attended or participated in the fiscal sustainability workshops. I actually agree with candidate Brian about reviewing contracts, reviewing practices, doing departmental reviews for efficiency. I'd like to see a review of the city legal department in terms of salaries, benefits, and litigation, and other departments as well. I think new leadership in the city might be able to have a very fresh and creative look to find revenues. And I'll hold my comment on Measure U for later. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All righty, so we're going to go another round of questions when we get started. We're going to start with Lizzie Wallach. It's a pretty good segue. Actually, Brian Barnacle made the comment about the climate emergency. So in May last year, the Petaluma City Council declared a climate emergency. A move that it has said raises the issue to the highest Petaluma priority, marshalling resources of the local government to analyze the city's contributions to climate change with a goal of zero carbon emissions within 25 years. Good job, you guys. Let my kids know how that works. Please describe your qualifications for addressing our climate emergency and how you think we're doing. Again, we're going to start with Lizzie Wallach.
Thank you so much. First and foremost, you know, I want to acknowledge the climate emergency in the sense that we no longer have the chance to choose items à la carte on what we're going to do and what we're not going to do. So every single thing that comes before us, we absolutely have to be looking through in terms of the people of Petaluma and our climate. And so first and foremost, I support the Climate Commission in their efforts and running the Climate Action Plan along with the General Plan. And then I think the main point to make here is having flexibility in how we're moving forward. And so it's not an issue of whether we're qualified today. It's we know we have an emergency today, and also how are we going to meet our emergency five years from now, 10 years from now? So to put in place flexibility where we have the opportunity to pivot when needed, I think, is absolutely crucial in this time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That was Lizzie Wallach. I'd like to hear from Brian Barnacle, please.
I am excited to address this topic. This is what I wake up every day to do, is to fight climate change. You know, it starts within ourselves and within our institutions. So personally, we need to stop using plastic water bottles. We need to stop using plastic bags. We need to stop that stuff. Then we need to, as an institution, we need our city to, like I said, split out the fossil fuel budget, adopt a resolution that says we're going to cut the fossil fuel budget in every single department by 10% each year. And that basically sends a signal throughout every department in our city that we're getting to no fossil purchases by 2030. And the technologies are there. I work in the industry, I know. And the grants are there. We just need to take leadership. Beyond that, we need to focus on equity. Our Climate Commission is not just about climate, it's about equity. And that means we need to be putting, making sure that we aren't leaving our frontline communities behind. And I'm the person for that. That's what I do every day. Thank you.
Thank you. That was Brian Barnacle. Now, Mike Healy.
Thank you. So I was happy to support the creation of our Climate Commission. I was happy to support Petaluma joining Sonoma Clean Power, where I currently serve as an alternate director. I think this truly is an all-hands-on-deck situation, and it's going to be a major focus for our city moving forward. I think it's going to be much easier for us to take meaningful local steps when we don't have the federal government pulling aggressively in the wrong direction. And I very much hope that we can be there by January. I would point out, though, that the Sid Commons Apartments, because we have other goals, like creating housing, were going to be zero net energy because, or are going to be zero net energy because of the solar panels on the project. And yet, for some people, that's still not good enough. You know, if you're creating housing with zero net energy, that's a pretty good thing in my book. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That was Mike Healy. Now, Robert Conklin, same question. What are your qualifications for addressing our climate emergency? How do you think we're doing?
I think the goal that's been set is attainable. Brian Barnacle wakes up. This is his wheelhouse. My wheelhouse is getting those boots on the ground and actually creating those jobs and doing those jobs and getting labor behind it to be at the forefront of the conversation so we can secure those careers in green, sustainable energy. We, you know, future projects in building, you know, using bamboo and other renewable resources are something we definitely need to be looking into. Not that it already isn't happening. But yeah, you know, we set goals and we try our hardest to meet those, and it gives us a, you know, guiding star to shoot for. So I think we, if we stayed the course, you know, we could create a cleaner, healthier Petaluma. Thank you.
Thank you. That was Robert Conklin. Gabe Kearney?
Thank you, Pam. I agree with other candidates that the climate emergency is something that is real, and we need to work on doing what we can to make sure that the city of Petaluma is moving forward in the right direction to combat it. We do need money to be able to do a lot of those things, though. We can't overnight just switch to all-electric buses. There isn't the revenue in our city to do that. And so we have to look at creative ways of how we're going to fund these projects moving forward. Creating a solar farm out at our wastewater treatment plant to make our water system carbon-neutral would be a great first step, in my opinion. And I brought it up from the council more than once. Educating our community, though, on why going to the Evergreen Plan on Sonoma Clean Power is also something that we can do. And I've mentioned that for the entire time we've been part of the Sonoma Clean Power Program. So doing those things are important, and I look forward to the Climate Action Plan in looking at how we can best implement that in our community. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. That was Gabe Kearney. Now Dennis Posake.
Yeah, I am a retired physician, and one of my issues is to make Petaluma healthier. And one of the first things I learned as a medical student was that in an emergency, you must respond decisively. I don't think we can debate the climate emergency any longer, and the first thing I want to do is to fully fund and staff our Climate Action Commission. The commission must be funded in order to first educate our community for the task ahead and to promote resident engagement in planning and decision-making. I'll also advocate for all staff reports on agenda items to highlight potential impacts on the climate and on climate justice and equity. Our General Plan will be revised in the next few years, and it must reflect safeguarding our community and the environment as primary rather than development for its own sake. We must expand our bus system and make cycling safer. And I'll also work with council colleagues toward 100% clean energy and zero waste. Thanks.
That was Dennis Posake. Thank you so much. And Susan Kirks?
Thank you, Pam. As I said, one of my, or actually, my number-one priority earlier this evening is for Petaluma to lead in low-carbon green growth planning and development. We definitely are in the midst of a climate emergency, and whomever our voters elect to the city council, this is a good question. What are our qualifications? I also have participated in all of the Climate Action Commission meetings and the framework development, and I've been very grateful that the commissioners have accepted my input as I wasn't invited to be on the ad hoc committees. But I happen to lead two conservation organizations, one based in Petaluma for 20 years and one county-wide for 53 years. One of my organizations is a member of Together Bay Area, a newly reformed coalition from the Bay Area Open Space Coalition, where equity and climate justice and climate action are essential, and everyone in the region is working together. So I have many resources, regional, state... So I have many resources, regional, state, and national.
Thank you so much, Susan. And we'd like to wrap up with Kathy Miller. Unmute.
Thanks, Pam. So obviously, I supported the climate emergency, supported the creation of the Climate Commission. I look forward to reviewing the Climate Action Plan. I've been a member of the Regional Climate Protection Authority, the board member for Petaluma, for the last five years. I'm also on the executive committee of that board. You know, we, as things come before the council, one of the things that we're doing is asking what the climate impacts are. We're asking what alternatives we have. We recently had added into our staff reports an analysis of the impacts on the climate. So that's already in there. We're looking at that in every report that we look at. You know, in certain instances, we don't have the technologies available to do some of the things that we want. I'm grateful that those technologies are coming on board and that we can do more. And at the end of the day, a lot of it is a funding issue. And, you know, again, I encourage people to vote for Measure U because we need those funds to combat climate change. Thank you.
Pam, you're muted.
That would be my turn. Thank you. We're going to take advantage of another segue, talking about the general plan-ish. Petaluma has an urban growth boundary that put us on the map some 70, 50 years ago, in the 70s. It has been, you know, it's flexed a few times over the years. But with discussion of updating that Petaluma General Plan underway, under what conditions would you propose an expansion of the urban growth boundary, if you would? And we'll start with Brian Barnacle.
Great question. I don't think I would propose an expansion to our urban growth boundary. I think that we need to be creative. I'm running, when I say to stay true to our roots, that's because, to me, the farms and the greenfields on the outside of our community are everything. That's what makes Petaluma special and separates it from being in Silicon Valley. I campaigned for the Smart Train in 2008. And what I've been most disappointed by with the Smart Train is not the train. It picks up and it drops off as it should. It's the land use practices. And it's the way that we've misused our land. And when we misuse our land to be not productive, it costs us economically. And that's a big part of why we're struggling right now as a city. It's because of poor land use decisions. The land use paradigm that our council continues to have is driven by, you know, probably 1970s or 80s thinking, and we need to update that.
Thank you so much. That's Brian Barnacle. And now Mike Healy.
Thank you. So just to correct you, Pam, our urban growth boundary dates to 1998. In the 70s, Petaluma had a growth management plan, and that's still in the books, but it's not used because it was really designed to prevent double sessions in Eastside Elementary Schools, which is a problem we no longer have. The community very much wants to stay within our current urban growth boundary when it expires. When the current gen came to the council in the early 2000s, the original proposal was to expand beyond that urban growth boundary in 2018, when it originally was going to expire. And I led the charge to say, no, no, we want to stay in there for the life of the new general plan, which is why it now expires in 2025 rather than 2018, and it stayed where it was. It's going to be a real challenge for us to achieve that with our RENA targets. And we're going to have to look for strategies for increasing the percentage of affordable units among the housing that gets done. And that's expensive, and it's going to be a challenge. And it's going to be a real community conversation. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for that clarification. 20 years isn't 50 years, but it's got a good running start on that. Thank you. And so I'd like to hear from Robert Conklin. Robert, any changes that you vision for our urban growth boundary?
I heard ideas of the 70s. Well, being a product of the 70s, some of that thinking and ideas need to stay in the past. I wouldn't be totally opposed to bumping out a tad because infill projects are causing havoc on traffic. And, you know, if you listen to people, they want to be the last person that moved into Petaluma. And they don't want anybody else, they don't want any more building. They don't understand that that's not really attainable. And you don't have a magic wand to stop building. We have, you know, numbers that we got to hit, and it's just how it is. You know, I would like to see some transit-based housing. You know, make it dense near the public transportation. And yes, I know we have buses, but, you know, specifically smart. And, you know, we can talk about building houses with no parking spots, but, you know.
Thanks so much, Robert. Appreciate it. Some good thoughts. Can we back that up with Gabe Kearney, please?
Thank you, Pam. I would be in favor of looking at the extension of the urban growth boundary when it expires in 2025. I do enjoy the nice green space that our city has and the ability to drive a very short distance out of our community and be right there in farmland, I think is great. And I would pay for our city to sprawl out into the farmland and take away from that rich resource that is right neighboring our community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That was Gabe Kearney. Dennis Posake?
Yeah, I'm not in favor of extending the urban growth boundary at this time, at least as far forward as I can see. I certainly would push for the new general plan to have climate change and equity as prime considerations. And my other priority would be, and which is necessary to accomplishing the first two, is changing our zoning ordinances to be more flexible or less prescriptive, which in order to allow more modest, if you will, affordable-by-design housing, although I don't like that term completely. But this will also lower the cost of subsidized housing and improve equity. So finally, I'd say that the general plan can never be rigorous enough to withstand a council that does not follow its intent.
Thank you very much. Dennis Posake. Susan Kirks?
Thank you, Pam. I am not in favor of expanding the urban growth boundary. And I would like to see, in our new general plan process, a revisiting of some of the components of the urban growth boundary in the last general plan. One of those was an urban separator path in areas where the general plan administrator thought that perhaps that was a way to deal with keeping a boundary at the urban growth boundary in certain areas and still allowing public access. And I'm for public access, but there are certain areas that we really need to take a look at for habitat protection, wildlife movement, and ensuring that that is protected at the edges of our urban growth boundary and with connectivity for wildlife movement. Also, I think we have some real opportunities for changing zoning and achieving our RENA targets and providing affordable housing with creative and really responsible planning efforts for housing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kathy Miller?
Thanks, Pam. So I'm not in favor of expanding.
You're muted, Kathy.
I wasn't. I didn't think I was. So I'm not in favor of expanding our, you know, urban growth boundary. I, you know, I think that the people of Petaluma have shown continually that they want to preserve that open space around town. I don't like the way that Roder Park, you know, sort of melds into Santa Rosa. And I don't think people in Petaluma want that. We certainly don't want to look like the East Bay or like the South Bay. So, you know, as a result of that, I think we're going to have to make difficult decisions on infill housing. And, you know, a continual problem that we have here in town is that people fight the infill housing in their neighborhoods. And it's been ongoing for as long as I've been on the council. It was ongoing while I was on the Planning Commission. And, you know, we really have to get people to, you know, to understand that we have housing needs. We have targets we have to meet. And if we want to keep our urban growth boundary the way it is, we have to do infill to all of it. Thank you.
Thank you. That was Kathy Miller. Now, Lizzie Wallach?
Thank you so much. No, I do not support expanding the urban growth boundary. And it really comes down to a couple of factors of environmental issues and equity issues. And we absolutely have to look at zoning, reuse, infill within our boundaries because we no longer can propose projects pushed to the edge of town that require two cars to access. That is not affordable housing. We need to talk about affordable lifestyles with true connection to transportation, meaning not transportation-adjacent. And we need to start to talk about what an affordable lifestyle is, not just affordable housing. And when we're talking about affordable lifestyles, we're talking about housing and development that is connected to goods and services, to schools, to childcare, and to jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. That was Lizzie Wallach. The, one of the comments sort of leads us into our question four, which we'll start with Mike Healy in just a minute. So along the theme of housing, since that was mentioned several times, according to the Argus Courier, a recently published report by the Urban Land Institute, which is an international land use research organization, they've highlighted potential areas in the city for housing, including the downtown area, East Washington, and the Corona Road Future Smart Station. So we'll start with, Mike, do you agree with their assessment and why?
I think the Urban Land Institute presentation that we got several days ago is what I would characterize as drive-by planning, or 30,000-foot planning. They were very creative. They weren't at all cognizant of real constraints on the ground or what the community wants. So I think they got people all agitated in a lot of areas by proposing putting a lot of housing on the fairgrounds. I certainly agree that potentially there could be reuse of some of our major shopping centers. But that's not something the city can simply impose. We need to reach out to the ownerships of the centers and engage in interest. I think they missed a bunch of sites that I would have highlighted. So I think that just shows you how complex this process is going to be. And we really need to have a more public process with a lot of input and thought given to those issues because it's going to be a real challenge for us. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That was Mike Healy. And Robert? Robert Conklin, you're up. The question is, do you agree with the assessment that East Washington, the Smart Train, and would be excellent spots for new construction?
Okay, here we go. The only, the spots I see, you know, down by Corona would be, is the only real place I can see some heavy building. I know we have this idea of, you know, dense housing next to the Smart Train. I mean, I would basically sit in there and just, and try to come up with the best. I mean, if stuff's getting built on there, I would have to, you know, it's not ideal because that's the main thoroughfare of the town. But it's kind of like, we're running out of places to put stuff. So I guess that's where it's going to be, you know. I do like the transit-oriented housing, and that's where it's going to be. So, yeah, just hopefully we don't build a bunch of houses on the fairgrounds. I know they want to put a hotel there, but, you know, hopefully that doesn't really go through.
Thank you so much. That was Robert Conklin. Gabe Kearney?
Thank you, Pam. As far as the ULI report, I thought it was very thought-provoking, created a lot of topics for discussion going forward. I was not in agreement with 100% of the ideas they put forward. But it was, I think, a good starting point for a discussion that our community has to have about how we want to redevelop and repurpose some of the properties inside our community. But there was not nearly enough input and involvement from the community in that process. And I look forward to, as we move forward, continuing to invite more people to the table to have a voice and to say in where we develop and how we develop our community, looking at some of the underutilized locations here in town. Thank you, Pam.
Thank you. That was Gabe Kearney. Dennis Posake?
Yeah, I also went to that presentation. And I believe that it's looking very far into the future of what we might accomplish here. But I think that's what I think we need to do, is advocate everywhere we can for affordable housing. And I would be very interested in starting to, if elected, starting to talk to some of these property owners about what they might be willing to do. Most of these shopping areas do have empty spaces, not all of them. And some of them might have, under a different council, had housing on them already. But I do believe that housing is a human right. I believe that we're not going to have an inclusive Petaluma until working people can afford to live here and that everyone who works in Petaluma should be able to live here. Thanks.
Thank you, Dennis Posake. And now Susan Kirks?
Thank you, Pam. The presentation that many of us watched was thanks to a LEAP grant from the state. And after the presentation, I followed up with the city manager's office to pose some questions. The stakeholders who were interviewed were limited. And my question was, who decided who the stakeholders were? Because that actually resulted in, I think, the kind of presentation that we all saw. One of those areas, which they wanted to call the Large River Park, if there had been anyone biologically expert in that particular area, that large area of housing that they were suggesting, centering around the river, probably wouldn't be feasible. And I think we had a real missed opportunity to further explore and study affordable housing from that grant. I also appreciated the planning commission's input. And I guess my time is up, but I think that we, as others have said, this is a complex issue with a lot of rezoning and a lot of community input to make the best decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to hear now from Kathy Miller. Kathy?
Thank you, Pam. I was actually one of the stakeholders that was interviewed by the ULI in advance of the presentation that we were given not too long ago. I thought it was an interesting presentation. As some other people said, it was a very, you know, sort of a very high-altitude look at potential sites here in Petaluma. And, you know, these sites are being used, a lot of them are being used for other purposes. And, you know, we can't just go in and say, sorry, we're taking your site. We're going to build housing on it. It requires agreement and input from the community. In terms of the highlighted areas, which I think was the question that you asked, I do think downtown is a good place for dense housing. I think portions of the East Washington corridor are also a good place for that. And certainly, if Mr. Barnacle's lawsuit doesn't derail our second smart station, I think that would be a good place for it, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy Miller. Lizzie Wallach, please.
Thank you so much. I really enjoyed that, you know, that kind of 35,000-view report. And I think a huge part of it, as council leaders, it's really the responsibility to help guide folks in the community how to understand this information that is really being tossed out at such a high level. And I think that, you know, it's not a one-size-fits-all situation. And there's multiple ways that we can engage community members to bring them to the table and understand it. Some people, you know, open up to drawings. Some, it's a workshop. Some, it's reading literature. But as far as what the report says, I, you know, I really am quite interested in the idea of adaptive reuse. We're moving through COVID- We're, we're moving through COVID right now. Things have just started to change and they're going to change a great deal more to come. So we absolutely should be looking at how we could start to partner with, um, you know, current leaseholders, current landholders, and what we could do to move through this time. Um, I would say, you know, putting, putting a brand, a brand-new development on the outskirts of town is, is further out. Let's dial in our transportation connectivity and affordable housing here first.
Thank you so much. Lizzie Wallach and Brian Barnacle.
Yep. I watched that one as well. I, um, and I, I genuinely, I, I appreciate the visionary aspects of it. I'll just say, we're going to get our second train station and it's going to be a much better project. Go to my, my website, brianbarnacle.com backslash Corona, and you can get a lot different facts than, uh, what the media and what the incumbents would like to have. Um, a couple of things, I disagreed with what they said about in the fair. Um, I think the fair is a cultural monument for our city. Um, on Corona, I love that they said, you need to take safety seriously. And, um, I totally agree. When you're putting a train station and 110 families at that intersection, you better be taking safety seriously. As we grow, if we're not growing out, we need to be increasingly taking safety seriously. And that's somewhere where the council has totally let us down. Um, on the area of reuse, Mike Healy brought that up. I really agree. But what they were calling out as opportunities were actually mistakes from the council's past and the lack of productive use of land. And the fact that the councils, under Mr. Healy's vote, had actually voted against our general plan. And then years later, they're talking about how we need to repurpose those, those sites. So just interesting stuff.
Thank you. Thank you so much. That was Brian Barnacle. So we're going on to our fifth question. Uh, we, we can hardly talk about, um, development without its companion, traffic. What would a forum, uh, about Petaluma be without traffic? We're going to start with Robert Conklin. And the question is, um, what are your top two ideas for addressing some of our problems to deal with traffic and roads?
No, traffic's actually what got me, uh, involved in this, this case for two years ago. Um, my son got injured and it took me about 45 minutes to get to Petaluma Valley Hospital from, uh, about where Petaluma High was. Um, and it kind of made me upset, got me mad, got me engaged. Um, uh, you know, we got to, um, there's no, you put more cars on the road, there's going to be traffic. Um, you put high-density, uh, projects, there's going to be traffic. Um, when we fix the roads, we got to fix them right, not just throw slurry and chip steel on top. You know, it's basically a spray painting of black. Um, it looks good, you know, it might fool the, uh, the layman, but, you know, when people actually who have, you know, paved downtown Petaluma, understand that it's, it's a sleight-of-hand trick. Um, you know, we can, uh, we can all talk about walkable and bikeable. Um, i- is that really, uh, feasible for a, a family? You know, are you going to have your, uh, jumbo pack of, uh, paper towels or, or Capri Suns strapped to your bike? I mean, I, I know it's, you know, feelable, but, um,
Thanks, Robert. Appreciate that visual. Uh, Gabe, Gabe Kearney, yeah, traffic and roads. What are your top two, uh, um, ideas for addressing some of our Petaluma problems?
Uh, thank you. So we have to continue to expand our transit system, uh, not only the Petaluma Transit, but work with our, uh, partners at Smart and Golden Transit to make the transit system more accessible to all folks. Uh, so there are more people taking public transit, uh, and less people on the roads. Uh, I am one of the people in town that have, have to commute to San Francisco, uh, for work. Uh, and I am, like many other folks in our community, uh, that have to get, you know, to a car to, to get to work. Uh, and making sure that our streets are safer for those folks that are driving and the pedestrians and the bicyclists, uh, that are using our roads as well. So continuing to, to do the projects we've done, like the road diet on Petaluma Boulevard South, which is going to be starting soon, uh, to, uh, increase the safety of that road and continue to do projects, uh, as we get the funding, uh, to improve the safety, like we've done on St. Martin Parkway and, uh, Maria. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was Gabe Kearney. Dennis Posake.
Uh, yeah. Um, I think we have to start to think about whether Rainier is the root cause of our road and traffic problems. Um, it's said by incumbents to be a solution to our traffic problems, but I don't think it is. I think it's a strategy to open up, uh, land adjacent to the river for development. Uh, the additional cost to complete this is still at least 66 million. I don't think there's a clearly identified source for that money. Uh, and in the meantime, we have $25 million in traffic mitigation funds being saved for Rainier. Um, I think a new council might be able to apply these funds to real traffic solutions, such as a crosstown connector, uh, at Caulfield at a fraction of the cost, improved traffic engineering and road repair, and decreased, um, car trips through transit-oriented development, bike lanes and walking paths. We also need to improve our, uh, transit and, uh, all of these things will allow us, uh, to, uh, proceed toward, towards a healthy, inclusive and sustainable future for our kids.
Thank you. That was Dennis Posake. I'd like to hear from Susan Kirks.
Thanks, Pam. Um, I was at a Climate Action Commission meeting recently and something really stayed with me that I think is relevant for my answer here. As the commissioners were looking at transportation, transit, uh, different types of, um, GHD emission reductions, uh, one person said, we have to redesign the entire system. And this is where we are in our city and at this time in our country and our, on our planet for the climate emergency. So my top two, um, priorities would be, as I said earlier, multimodal transportation and transit. That is coordinating and, and, and integrating our system of, um, bus tran- bus transportation, paratransit, um, transit, the smart train. Uh, walking and bike trails are really important because some people actually use their bikes to get to work. So we really need to have an integrated and connected, uh, bike and pedestrian system with that. And I also support the Caulfield Connector. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kathy Miller.
So I can't possibly cover this topic in a minute, but, um, I am the board member on the Sonoma County Transportation Authority. And I've served on that board for five years. And, um, I spend a lot of time on transportation and transit and road issues, uh, in both regionally and locally. Um, in, in terms of, of dealing with our traffic and roads, you know, we're, eh, we're seeking an extension of the transportation tax, which is a self-help tax for our county. And part of that is a reallocation of those funds. Um, the last iteration was, uh, a substantial portion of it went to the Highway 101 widening, which is now fully funded. Um, we are now changing the, the allocation and, and 35% of it will go towards, uh, buses and pedestrian and bicycle projects, um, which is a substantial amount compared to previously. And so that's one way that we're going to get more money into the city of Petaluma to do these projects that will make traffic flow more easily and improve our roads. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lizzie Wallach.
Thank you. So, you know, I think that there are some, some very decent Band-Aids that we could talk about in, in the near term, but what I would like to do is project out and say that we cannot attack or tackle our transportation issues if we're not looking at development and economic development at the same time. So we absolutely have to be looking at housing, transportation, and commercial space to use where folks are going, how they need to get there. Because in order to get people out of cars and on their feet, they need to be able to walk their kids to school or ride their bikes. They have to go to work. You have to get a pack of diapers from a store. You have to be able to, to enjoy a shopping experience from your home. And until that can happen, we're not going to make any substantial issues. To take it a couple of steps further, when we're talking about development, we need to start exploring job share, uh, ride shares, car shares, bike shares, and stop putting two-car garages in new developments.
Thank you very much. And I'd like to hear from Brian Barnacle.
What I took from what Lizzie just said was we need to be creative. Um, more of the same is not going to get us there. We, we talked about traffic relief and the current council has delivered traffic without the relief. And it's very much tied to development. Um, for example, right now, we're putting in about 250 homes along the riverfront. We're putting in, um, about 100,000 square foot of commercial. And there's another 250-plus homes and another 100 and some thousand square feet of commercial going in there. We're talking about 500 homes that are all going to empty on the Lakeville. And there's one way in and one way out. And the general plan called for, um, a Caulfield Bridge. Um, and of course, the, the incumbent donors, um, asked for that not to be included and they didn't have it. And as a result, now, uh, Lakeville is going to have terrible traffic when that's built out. It's going to be horrible. And not only is it going to be horrible, it's unsafe. And that's what I mean. We can't just have this willy-nilly development. We need to be more thoughtful about how we develop and we need to deliver traffic relief, not traffic.
Thank you so much. And we'll wrap up that same question with Mike Healy. Mike?
Thank you. So I think one, one of the odd side effects of the pandemic is that it has actually reduced traffic in town. And when COVID finally goes away and things go back to normal and kids are going to school and getting picked up and dropped off twice a day and, and going to Little League and everything else, I think we're going to see a, a bounce back to the traffic levels we've experienced in the past. So traffic remains a, a major concern. I would like to see the city partner with the schools to, to try to encourage more bicycle and pedestrian access for students. Uh, as Kathy mentioned, uh, Measure DD, that would, if it passed, gives, give us more money both for transit um, and for extending our bicycle path network. Um, the Caulfield Southern Crossing actually is in our general plan, but I do believe Rainier should be the top priority in the near term for the funding balance that we have. Um, because we're spending $7 million right now on those undercrossing structures, which was a unanimous vote, and, uh, we need to take the next steps. Thank you.
Thank you. That was Mike Healy. The, uh, we've got a new question now coming up and we're going to start with Gabe Kearney. Gabe, we're completely getting away from, um, uh, construction for the time being of roads or houses. Uh, unlike the majority of developed countries worldwide, the United States does not guarantee paid annual leave, paid time off for illness or family care, or paid parental leave. And then there came COVID. About a dozen cities, uh, and counties in California, including Santa Rosa and Sonoma County, have, uh, um, recently passed policies emergent, that would be, um, implement emergency paid sick leave for any resident affected by the coronavirus to close the loophole in the federal First Coronavirus Response Act, which exempted large employers with more than 500 employees. Some Petaluma residents who work in, in those jurisdictions will benefit. Would you support paid sick leave for employees working in large Petaluma companies who are affected by the virus? And why or why not?
Uh, well, thank you, Pam. I think that question was longer than the time I'm allowed to answer. Uh, but I think that as we move forward, uh, and, and look at how we can prevent the spread of, of, of diseases like COVID-19, uh, making people make the decision of whether or not they put food on their table uh, or go to work and spread, uh, a virus, uh, to their coworkers and endanger others in our community. Uh, that's not a decision we should be forcing folks to make. And so we should do everything we can to make it easier for folks to stay home when they're sick or just be able to stay home and care for their loved ones when they're sick. Uh, and it's, that's the best way for us to prevent the spread, uh, and to make it so, uh, you're not making the, the decision, do I buy my, my insulin, uh, or, or my, my, uh, high blood pressure medicine? Uh, or do I, uh, go to work in order to keep my benefits and, and not lose my job? You know, eh, eh, it's something that's, uh, also, if we had universal healthcare, would be a better solution, but that's not under our authority. Thank you, Pam.
Thank you very much. That was Gabe Kearney. Dennis Posake. You did.
Uh, until such time as there's a safe and effective vaccine, uh, the only way to control the virus, revive our economy and reopen our schools is to follow public health principles and guidelines. There aren't any shortcuts. The city has to take a strong stand and advocate for so- social distancing and mask wearing. And we do need to protect workers via paid sick leave and family leave and the inclusion of employee voices in the design of reopening strategies. Um, renters and homeowners need forgiveness for misrent and mortgage payments and, and also from evictions due to the pandemic. Um, all this costs money. We hope the feds and the, uh, state government will help, but we got to be willing to take a little, what we can do if they don't. Finally, we need to take vigorous targeted actions, uh, to protect our Latinx community, which is bearing the brunt of the virus in Sonoma County. And, um, um, beyond that, uh, getting, as, as this goes on and as we try to recover, to support our local business community as well. Thanks.
Thank you so much. That was Dennis Posake. Susan Kirks, what do you think?
Well, I think that this takes us back to real need for national leadership and looking at, um, having another stimulus package passed by Congress and encouraging everyone to please vote so that, uh, we have a new administration and an alignment so that, um, when the companies who may be, uh, suffering also in their bottom line, uh, want to provide, uh, uh, leave for their employees and seem to be faced with the decision about whether or not to do that, uh, we'll have some, uh, funding grants, loans, um, to help them, support them, support their employees. So I would, yes, of course, I would be in favor of paid sick leave and, um, uh, what Dennis had said in particular, our communities that are hit hardest to people actually have to decide whether or not to go to work if they're sick. We don't, we want them to stay home, but we don't want other people to be infected too. So all of these things are, are related and it's really important that we vote.
Thank you.
So that we can have these decisions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Kathy Miller, your thoughts?
So, um, the, this policy for emergency paid sick leave is, is scheduled to come to the council, um, shortly, um, probably before the end of the year. And, um, you know, it, it certainly is a, is a loophole in the federal law and, and, you know, I, I would support trying to, uh, trying to close that loophole. Um, the one thing that does concern me about it is, you know, doing something in sort of this piecemeal fashion that we're doing, you know, I, I would, I would prefer it had to have been something that was done at the federal level so that, you know, it wasn't something that, that the cities and counties were having to make individual decisions on, um, because it, it impacts people differently. So, um, you know, I, I do support closing that loophole and, and as I said, it will come to the council, um, likely before the end of the year. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Kathy Miller. Lizzie Wallach.
Thank you so much. Yes, I think from one thing that we can tell is, is we have tremendous failed national leadership at, at this time. And so we absolutely need to ramp up our local leadership and work together to really take care of our community. So A, yes, I do support this. And then I would also like to say that we really need to be, um, taking a closer look at our folks that are most vulnerable, that have been hit the hardest and figure out how we can help assist them. And these are folks that are working, um, you know, minimum wage jobs, domestic workers that do not get any, any, any help. Um, and I think there's also an opportunity to have a discussion with the school board and, and Petaluma City Schools and really start to, to figure out how we can start to support each other as we navigate this po- this COVID and post-COVID landscape. Um, you know, this, the schools, you know, as, as a mother of small children and a small business owner, when my children are home, it's, it's a big hit. Um, you know, the schools are just starting to open up for some distant learning, um, centers and I think continued support. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Your thoughts, Brian Barnacle?
I will always stand on the side of workers and working families and keeping them safe. That's why I've been endorsed by the North Bay Labor Council, uh, several unions and, um, and our school board members, um, our school board trustees, because it's just important to keep workers safe. Um, so I will absolutely, I would support that. Um, the other area that I think is really important where the city needs to take leadership is educating residents and businesses about the importance of air quality and indoor air quality. Um, twice in the last three weeks, I've woken up with a bloody nose because of the smoke in my house. And that's an air quality issue. I've talked to other people about it and they're having similar issues. And we need to be taking leadership and helping our small businesses get the highest quality air filtration systems that MERV 13, not MERV 12. It captures airborne viruses. It captures, uh, particulate matters from smoke. We've raised this with the council several times and I still have yet to see a communication come from our city. It's just super important. It's just super important that we're helping our residents and our businesses on these things.
Thank you so much. That was Brian Barnacle. Mike Healy?
Thank you. So I've been hearing about this issue for a while. I expected it to come to council before now. I know it's been sidetracked because the city attorney wanted to do more due diligence on it, but I do agree with the previous speakers who say this looks like something that Congress should have taken care of but didn't, and so now we're going to have to deal with it. So I'm looking forward to supporting it. And I just want to mention, I have a pretty strong track record on social justice issues and working with Marty Bennett and his friends over the years. I supported our local living wage. I supported more recently our local minimum wage. I supported the jobs housing nexus fee to get money for workforce housing. And I supported card check neutrality at Petaluma Sheraton, which is why that was the one you know as hotel in Sonoma County for many, many years. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That was Mike Healy. And let's wrap up with Robert Conklin.
Yeah, I gotta, gotta love those hotels. We should, we should build one right on the fairgrounds. So, yeah, I actually experienced this. My employer takes this as serious as a heart attack. If you call in sick, you're required to stay off work for 10 days unpaid. So, you know, historically, I make a majority of my income during the summer and you're making people decide whether to miss two weeks of pay because they have a sniffle or they're dehydrated or whatever. Yeah, I mean, we might have lack of leadership coming from above, but as city council members and local government, you know, we need to take the ball and show some leadership where it's lacking from above. I mean, my eyes are burning too. I mean, I'm now, you know, saving animals and, and, you know, we should definitely, I mean, have, have filters and, and, you know, and start retrofitting them to schools and.
Thank you. And thank you for the work you're doing. Appreciate it. The, we're going to shift questions again. This time, we're going to start with Dennis Posake. The topic this time is race relations. So race relations have been sort of on the forefront of people's minds since the killing of George Floyd. Most of the focus has been on law enforcement and strategies such as teaming up with mental health professionals, and those are promising. In what other ways can the city council improve equity in Petaluma?
Well, you know, in a healthy, inclusive, and sustainable Petaluma, everyone must have the opportunity to thrive. And racism, discrimination, and inequality are alive and well in our country, and Petaluma is definitely not exempt. I've seen this as I've worked as a de-escalator at several of the Black Lives Matter demonstrations. The, I think that this needs to come from the top in terms of how to deal with racism. I guess the one, one way I like to put it is that we should treat it like COVID-19. That number one, assume you have it. Number two, listen to experts. Number three, don't spread it. And number four, be willing to change your life to end it. I think the city council has to take the lead and it has to make it part of the vision for the city. And I think that beyond that, everyone at every level of city government has to feel comfortable questioning their higher ups in this regard.
Thank you. That was Dennis Posake. Dennis, we'll have you followed by Susan Kirks. Susan, your thoughts?
Thank you, Pam. I really enjoyed participating in the first listening circle. And as community leaders, I think we all would want to continue doing that, listening, learning, especially those of us who are white, even if we have a record, you know, of civil rights activism and participating to help improve race relations over our lifetime. I, I have to say, I was surprised when I first discovered and learned that the population in Petaluma was almost 80% white. And I think there's a reason for that. So I would like to say that there are structural things that we can do to ensure that people feel safe in our community, which is to review our community safety function and also to focus on providing fresh food, fresh air, fresh water, and affordable housing for everyone who might want to live here in all areas of our city. That's a responsibility of leadership and by our city council. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Susan, as usual, followed by Kathy Miller.
Thanks, Pam. So, you know, we are, we are looking forward at the city council to a workshop that we will be holding to discuss the results of the listing circles. And I'm very much looking forward to hearing that and to participating in that workshop. I think that, you know, one of the things that is really important is that we, we have bias training. People all have biases, whether you think you do or not. And bias training is really important. It sort of allows you to examine what your biases are and try and correct that, which is, is, is one of the things that we can do. Certainly, you know, we are looking at some reforms of policing, and that will be something that, you know, we'll continue with. And I think they, at the end of the day, we have to keep listening to people, you know, just to understand what their experiences are. Because it's not something that I'm experiencing, but I know that there are people in the community who are, and we have to listen and, and help them, help them feel better and help the issues be resolved. Thank you.
Thank you. That was Kathy Miller. Lizzie Wallach.
Yes, thank you so much. First and foremost, I'd like to start by saying that Black Lives Matter. They matter in particular right now because all lives do not yet matter in this country. And as a panel of a majority of white folks sitting up here, it is our responsibility to educate ourselves and figure out how to move forward. We absolutely need to be conducting listening circles within our community and seeking input from our Black Indigenous and people of color and other leaders in the community. And it is our responsibility to figure out what work needs to be done and how to do it. And it's not through a singular commission. It is through every single issue that we're looking at moving forward and every single commission that exists needs to be looking at all of the issues through two lenses, and those are of equity, social justice, and environment. So, so really, it starts with us and it starts here and it starts in leadership. And it hasn't been done yet, and now is the time to do it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That's Lizzie Wallach. Brian Barnacle, your thoughts?
Yeah, I, this is a really, really interesting topic where I'm still learning. I'm learning every day. And I, my approach to, to learning is relationships. So I start by building relationships with community leaders. I listen to what they have to say. I follow their lead, and then I make sure that I take action. And that's my, my approach to building trust with these community groups. For me, it's extremely important that we start to take these things a lot more seriously, that members of our council are having bias training and that we are reaching out into these communities and preparing leaders within those communities to run for council. Because we need to have leaders on our council from our diverse community. And we can, it's a lot of work to run for council and they need a strong support network. And when we have a bunch of white people who have been on the council and a bunch of white people are running for council, they just aren't building relationships in those communities to help prop up the people who are in our diverse community and in our frontline communities to help them become leaders in our community at the city government level.
Thank you. That was Brian Barnacle. Mike Healy?
So one thing I've spent a fair amount of time on over the years is trying to recruit people in the community to apply for our city commissions and committees. We've had a pretty good track record of recruiting minorities for those positions. You can always do better. I'm very proud that 10 years ago, I was able to get Mr. Kearney appointed to a vacant seat on our city council that existed at the time. I too am looking forward to the report on listening circles. And I can tell you that as a past president of the North Bay Division of Cities and the chair of this year's nominating commission for next year's officers, we, I will be announcing tomorrow morning that a black mayor in Solano County will be on leadership track to be a president of the North Bay Division two years down the road. So that's, that's a first for that group. And I also very much want to take my, use my position with the League of Cities to advocate for more, more work in Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you. That was Mike Healy. Robert Conklin?
People are talking about equity and making it a race issue. Not saying that I got the good side of the coin being a white male. I'm not going to deny that, you know, I have it better than some people by default. What the real problem is, is economic inequality. That doesn't see color. When I'm on the job site in a trench with a shovel, the guy next to me is a guy with a shovel helping me dig a hole, get a job done. And that's what we need to do. Black lives do matter. But if you ask 10 different people what that means to them, you're going to get 10 totally different answers. And because we broke down communication and we have, you know, it's a major division in our country. And us as local leaders, leaders don't need titles, we just need to keep that line of communication open and try to make, you know, what's best for our community and for everyone.
Thank you. That was Robert Conklin. And we'll wrap up this question with Gabe Kearney.
Thank you, Pam. And, you know, Councilmember really alluded to the fact that he voted to appoint me to the council and then I ran and successfully was re-elected twice, becoming the first LGBT member of the Petaluma City Council and the first Mexican-American man to sit around the city council. Going forward, I'd like to continue to work to get more people of different backgrounds and different ethnicities on our commissions, committees, and commissions, committees throughout the city and to work to bring our meetings out into the public, more Saturday sessions, more meetings at community centers and at the fairgrounds to allow for, for more space for people to be able to bring their kids and ride their bike and, and come when they're not, you know, having worked eight hours during the day and then have to go to the city hall at seven o'clock on a Monday night. It makes it harder for folks to be able to have a voice at the table and be able to make their voice heard. And so I'd like to continue to bring the meetings out in the community like we've been doing. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So we're going to have our last question of the evening. And sort of our overarching health elephant in the room has been the coronavirus. Who amongst us knew in March that we'd be the first of October and, and that would weigh on us every day? So the question is, we know that the coronavirus has affected our community financially and mentally. What do you say is the city's role in improving these conditions? If there is such a role? We'll start with Susan Kirks.
That's an interesting question. What is the city's role? I think that the city has defined services that are provided to members of the public and to be available to members of the public, to be readily able to communicate, to have referrals, services, to have a strong relationship with our healthcare community, with our schools community, and to, as a city, and I would say as, if we were all elected leaders, to be compassionate and understanding of our employee situations. So the city is responsible for a large number of employees who are experiencing a variety of different impacts. And that, that leadership is really important as an example for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan Kirks. Kathy Miller, your thoughts on what we can do as a community, community leaders financially and mentally?
So, you know, the city has been doing quite a few things to try and help people financially as well as mentally. And examples of some of those things that we've done include, we've done loans to businesses, we've done training for businesses and employees, we've moved some of our restaurants outside so that they can keep in business and, and put together parklets in our streets so that people can dine outside. We've done a lot of things that have, have, you know, hopefully have helped some of our city's employees and businesses, you know, continue to, to, to do the best they can during this difficult time. We know that this is impacting people's mental health, be it instituted a Slow Streets program. You know, we are seeing a lot of people out in our parks, which I think is wonderful. And so those are some things that we have done to help people during this time. And I anticipate we will continue to do those things as long as we are continuing to experience the effects of the pandemic. And we've encouraged people to social distance and wear masks and, 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 you know, so things like that too. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy Miller. Lizzie Wallach?
Thank you. Yeah, so I mean, this is really where the rubber meets the road, right? As city leaders and how, how we're going to get through this and come out thriving on the other end. And I would say that first and foremost, it takes absolutely the strongest of the leadership that is just always willing to stick their neck out there and smile, lend a hand, ask a question, check in on folks in the community. So first and foremost, I think there is a tremendous aspect of just human engagement and, and reaching out and, and asking the questions. I think, you know, being leaders, absolutely, of, of, you know, health ordinances and talking about wearing masks and avoiding risky situations. You know, but, but really, it's really all about the community right now. And so first and foremost, everything, we need to be thinking about the folks in our community. And now with impacts of fires, you know, it has just gotten exponentially more difficult. And I think that we need to be doing everything and everything and anything for that outreach and really caring for our Petalumans. Thank you.
Thank you. That was Lizzie Wallach. Brian Barnacle, what do you think?
Well, I already mentioned air quality because it hits really close to home. So we need to be doing more to message and get the word out on air quality. We also need to be making sure that we're providing the highest level of responsive service to our families and our educators and our small businesses right now. We are doing parklets. We were too late. Those are, it was a no-brainer. And now we're, we're heading into the winter and we need to be doing listening circles with different small businesses because they all have different needs and we need to find out what they are and what threats they're facing. Because as we head into the winter, they're not going to be outside. What are we going to do when nobody can be outside? So we absolutely, these are the things that they're, they're facing right now. I love going and sitting out on Water Street. We've got another month and a half. We need to, we need to be actively working with them and turning our attention to our small businesses, to our families and our educators, and making sure that we're having human engagement because they need it. They need all the support they can get from anyone in leadership.
Thank you. That was Brian Barnacle. Mike Healy, your thoughts?
Thank you. Well, it's definitely an all-hands-on-deck situation. I agree with the comments that Councilmember Miller made with respect to the programs the city's trying to do to help citizens and businesses. I think the parklets are going to become permanent. I think we should start treating them that way. And, you know, other cities are putting more permanent structures out there that would be better in the winter months. I would support that. I was proud to see that Petaluma- see that Petaluma is one of only two jurisdictions that's doing serious enforcement on health orders. And I think most of the people in the community really want to do the right thing. And a lot of people get very frustrated when they see a handful of people not wanting to do the right thing. I think the impact on the city's budget, unfortunately, is we're not going to be hearing that until November. I'm not expecting good news. The Marin IJ reports today that Nevada was laying off seven employees. That's what we might be facing if Measure U does not pass. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That was Mike Healy. Robert Conklin, your thoughts?
The woes of distance learning, and I feel like my son right now, because I was getting badgered while on this candidate forum. We need to really, as a community, focus on buying local, you know, especially if Measure U passes, whether it does or not. We need to ban Black Friday. We need to keep our money in-house. We need to not be shopping at Amazon. You know, we seriously need to, you know, become our own little country right now. I drove across country last week, and, you know, seemed like everybody was wearing their mask. And why this is a political statement, it absolutely baffles me. I got a picture of my great-grandmother at the hatchery, wearing a mask. And if you didn't wear a mask, you were a slacker. Why is it all of a sudden we're getting our rights taken away? We need to be adults. And we need to basically look after each other and seriously circle the wagons. And, you know, I think Petaluma can get through this. We just need to work together and, I mean, seriously cut the crap and focus on, you know, just surviving right now.
Thank you. Thank you. We're going to have a new t-shirt coming. I feel that coming on. Gabe Kearney, your thoughts?
Well, I think we started to do a lot of work in Petaluma to make it easier for the businesses to transition and bring their businesses in line with the COVID regulations. We need to continue to do that work. You know, our staff do a phenomenal job partnering with the county staff to make sure our community is safe. All we have to do is look at the three shelters that were set up in the past three days to help our neighbors from the rest of Sonoma County who needed to evacuate. And our city staff stepped up to handle those evacuees into our community. Our city staff have worked with the Public Health Department on how to best enforce and make the regulations easy to understand for the folks in our community. We need to continue to do that. Hopefully, we won't see a second wave that is as debilitating as the first. And we can move forward and recover from COVID and the economic crisis that it's created. Thank you.
Thank you. That was Gabe Kearney. Dennis Posake.
Yeah, I think, you know, we've never been through this before. Not physicians, not infectious disease experts. We've never been here before. I don't think anyone can really predict with with much certainty what's going to happen this winter. And I think that we got to take care of everyone and come together as a community and know that we're all in this together in every way we can. We need to take care of people. I think there's more we can do to help our citizens who are suffering depression or anxiety, to help them with their approach to this whole thing, and to get maybe more exercise in some additional ways. We can help workers, as we've already talked about, with paid sick leave, paid emergency sick leave, paid family leave. We can help businesses. And we're looking for creative ideas everywhere. There is no playbook for this to say, do this, this, and this. Whether we call them listening circles or something else, we have to get all the stakeholder, groups of stakeholders together and try to spread what we decide what seem to be the most creative ideas. Thanks.
Thank you so much. That was Dennis Posake. So thank you, candidates, for answering those questions in such a thoughtful way. We really appreciate that. And we're going to give you a chance, as I suspected, running a little bit long, so hang in with me. Another six, seven minutes will be off. We're going to give each candidate an opportunity for a 30-second closing. We're going in reverse order from the first time, so it'll be hard for you to remember who you follow us. I'll say we're going to start with Susan Kirks and be followed by Dennis Posake.
Thank you, Pam. And thank you to AAUW for really an excellent forum tonight. I really appreciated the timekeeper as well. I'm a candidate for Petaluma City Council as a 20-year resident here in Petaluma, and I believe I can make a very positive difference as an elected official representing the citizens of Petaluma. If I am fortunate to receive your voice, I will, your vote, excuse me, I will be your voice on the city council. Please visit my website, SusanKirks@Petaluma.com to learn more about my positions and my willingness to serve and my leadership experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. We're going to hear from Dennis Posake, followed by Gabe Kearney.
Thanks, Pam. I also want to thank the AAUW for hosting this forum, and to thank everyone who's in attendance. I am grounded in this community, and I've demonstrated my ability to work hard to get things done. People know me, and I know the people and organizations that are doing good work. If you agree with me that it's time for new voices on the council, please go to my website, posakeforcouncil2020.com, and remember to vote for me as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That was Dennis Posake. We're now going to hear from Gabe Kearney, followed by Robert Conklin.
Thank you, Pam, and thank you all to all the other AAUW volunteers that have put on this forum tonight. Thank you to those that have tuned in to listen to us. I look forward to continuing to serve the Petaluma community and all of its residents if reelected in November. I would ask for your vote and ask you to join the public safety employees in Petaluma who have endorsed me, the Petaluma Argus Courier, Congressman Jared Huffman, and Senator Bill Dodd endorsing me in my reelection bid. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That was Gabe Kearney. We're now going to hear from Robert Conklin, followed by Mike Healy.
There we go. So we've got three people on this forum right now, Brian Barnacle, Gabe Kearney, and myself. We all grew up here, you know, decisions that are going to be made in the future, you know, we look at it a little bit differently, because we're not only, you know, our history is at risk, but our future, you know, Petaluma develops and changes. It's just how it goes. You know, I toot my own horn again, you know, two weeks ago, I was saving animals from one fire. And this week, I was doing it again. And I was at the fairgrounds today, and I watched a bunch of trailers come in from the Santa Rosa Fairgrounds. And it, because they were evacuating. You know, when those hotels are built on the fairgrounds, are we going to charge the evacuation victims?
Time's up.
Thank you. That was Robert Conklin. Again, thank you so much for your volunteer help. The next person we're going to hear from is Mike Healy, followed by Brian Barnacle.
Thank you to AAUW, and thank you for everyone who's taken the time to tune in tonight. I moved here in 1982, which makes me a newcomer. That's one of the charms of this town. But I'm a lifetime resident of Sonoma County. I love this town. I want to continue serving this town. And I'm proud to have been endorsed by the Petaluma Argus Courier, our Petaluma firefighters, our Petaluma police officers, Congressman Huffman, and Senator Dodd. And thank you again for your time.
Thank you so much. That was Mike Healy, followed by Brian Barnacle, and then Lizzie Wallach.
I don't have enough time to name off all the endorsements I've got. But this election is about our future. And the incumbents are saying that this is the best they can, that we can do. And the truth is, this is the best they can do. We can't go on with more of the same and expect things to change. I bring fresh ideas, ideas that are forward-looking, feasible to implement, and stay true to our history. I don't have a magic wand, but I always put the interest of people and our planet ahead of the profits of developers. Please start talking to your neighbors, your families, and your friends. Spread the word about what is at stake in this election, and go to brianbarnacle.com to volunteer and stay up to date on my campaign. Thank you, and good night.
Thank you so much. That was Brian Barnacle. We're now going to hear from Lizzie Wallach, and then from Kathy Miller.
Thank you. And thank you again for the AAUW for hosting us tonight. It really has been a pleasure. And I'd like to say that representation matters. We need fresh and diverse voices on our city government. With my background in architecture and design, and what is coming up on the docket, I have a lot to bring to the table. In the 2010 census, almost 35% of Petalumans have children under the age of 18, yet no one on our council has small children that are currently in the Petaluma City school system. I will bring that voice to the council. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Lizzie Wallach. And we'll wrap it up with Kathy Miller.
Thank you. Thank you so much for hosting the forum, and thank you for everybody who is listening in tonight and watching. We're living in difficult times, and experience matters. I've been a leader in this community for 15 years. I collaborate with my city staff, with the city council, with our regional partners, and our state and federal partners. And it's important to have that experience. I ask for your vote. I ask for you to support Measure U. And I thank you all for attending tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So it's my turn. AAU encourages informed and active participation in government. Because you're watching this broadcast, you clearly agree with that philosophy. I'd like to call out some additional people. I'm going to repeat some that I mentioned at the beginning, who have been instrumental in helping with this forum. Joshua Simmons and Christopher Nogobauer helped with some of the technical and making us look good. We've got Stephanie Capps and Kathy Schmidt from AAUW. And I'd like to give a real shout out, shout out to our very creative timekeeper, Patrick Carter. So you can find additional nonpartisan information, all elections, and candidates on the League of Women Voters election website, one of our colleagues in Sonoma County. This forum will be available for viewing on our website. That's aaupetaluma.org. As I understand, we'll also have an opportunity to see that on the League website, and a couple others. So just in case you haven't gotten enough, you can watch us again. I would particularly like to thank these candidates for joining us this evening. This would be the time when I would encourage you all to be giving them a round of applause to show appreciation for their willingness to serve as our elected officials. So I'm going to do it, because I got the floor. So thank you so much. On behalf of AAUW, I ask that you remember to vote on November 3. You know what I always say? Vote early, vote often, just not in the same year. Thank you so much, and good night.
Bye. Thank you and good night. Be safe, everyone.